All right, well, good evening and welcome to our April School Board work session. Today is Thursday, April 6, 2023. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. So we just have two items on the agenda for tonight and beginning with our staff spotlight of K-6 music teachers.
Yeah, we'll start with our evening tonight, talking about what our teachers do at the elementary level and when it comes to music and why that's important and how we make sure kids get that well-rounded experience during Wasika. So turn it over to our staff and they can share with you what they do.
Hello, my name is David Schmidt. I teach elementary music at Hartley, grades kindergarten to third grade. Thank you for allowing me to be part of your meeting tonight, I really appreciate that. I'd like to share with you just a bit about three things, what we work on in K-3 music, why it's important and why do the kids enjoy it so much? There's a lot of fun to be had. This is a picture of one of our kindergarten classes. Next slide if you could, thank you. So first, what do we work on? We work on experiencing the music of others, making sense of it. This is where the fundamentals of making music happen. So building identity as people with music in our lives and also identifying with music, making choices for students to build their own music is something we do a lot, celebrating our culture through making music and also reading and writing songs and ideas. So very much a general music class, hitting everywhere we possibly can. Next slide, please. So a ton of what we do in elementary music class involves music learning in the form of singing and saying, dancing and playing, whether it's in the form of using instruments or using our own bodies to make sounds, for creating sounds, or using games to explore sound relationships. This is just a brief 12-second video on a song that students in second grade were working on putting together.
Ready, set, here you go.
So really working on those fundamentals, it's a lot of joy. Next slide if you could, thank you Caitlin. So why is it important? Obviously, we're building community in everything we do together or practicing decision-making. It's based upon values of what we believe, what we think, exercising that, confidence in expressing oneself and what that means to us, also literacy, so building that ability to read, and also appreciation and value of the world, everyone in it, everything in it. So the ways that we work together and make music, they're important because they're the basis of the skills and traits that we use for the rest of our lives, plain and simple. So we also get to connect to community through performances and concerts. Veterans Day, we had a program that was well-received. We have some more concerts coming up this spring too, on May 9th. Third graders will be performing then as well and we'd love for you to join us either for a matinee performance or the evening one at 7:00 PM. So why do students enjoy their work? They get to grow naturally through being social, exploring many possibilities and choices, and access, access to sound, access to instruments. Every student is able to have an instrument in their hands and become confident in making music, making sound, and having what they're thinking in their head actually become a reality. So we've been extremely fortunate these last three years to have support locally from our community, state, national businesses as well. We've acquired nearly $10,000 in additional grants beyond our classroom budget and that has allowed us to acquire nearly 200 new instruments that the students have never had in their hands before, which is amazing. So that's really cool, the sky's the limit when our students are able to explore in sound. So just thank you so much for letting me present with you today, thank you for all your support. The community support is so meaningful as is yours, so thank you for working together.
And I'm Craig Brendan, I teach fourth grade general music and fifth and sixth grade band at the Intermute School. I passed around a little thing about why teach music. There's five tenants here and these I believe in very seriously. It's science, there's a specific way music is built and you have to understand how the science, how it all fits together. It's mathematical. I can only count to four, but I can divide four up many different ways, trust me. But it's the vision of time and how time affects music. It's a foreign language. We teach Italian, German, French, the basic classic languages, the words that students have to understand on an everyday basis when we are performing music and teaching it. Physical education, it builds up wind. Many people say that I'm kind of windy and it's probably because I play trumpet, but it's because there's a physical portion that comes, there's dexterity in your fingers, there's actual work with your lungs and capacity of your body. And if you've ever watched The Marshing Band, there's a physical aspect of that too, that they, those kids are as in good a shape as any of the athletes we have performing on our teams representing our school. But most of all, music is art. Art is central and core to who we are as human beings. Think back to when you look at babies and young kids, what are the first things they do? They start to sing, they start to dance, that's music. How'd you learn your alphabet? Does anybody know?
A, B, C, D, E.
Yeah, you sang it, right? A, B, C, D, E, F, G. We celebrate our lives in music, birthdays, weddings, anything significant in our lives. From the cradle to the grave, music is an integral part of who we are and what we do. I challenge, I've always said this, I challenge you, and I've got, I've always had money on it, if you can go one day without having music in your life and tell me that it was a good day, think about that. You can't have any bit of music in your life, nothing for that one day. That means there's no alarm clock, nothing in your car, nothing, because you can't turn on anything 24 hours. You can't walk into a store. Music is everywhere you go. It's who we are, it's part of our being. Wasika Public Schools have had a long tradition of musical excellence and support from the community and from the school board and we're proud of it, the community's proud of it. We look to advance everything that we do with our music and we are a big enough district and yet a small enough district that we can offer these things to every one of our students should they decide to do it. And being a part of a musical organization, be it band, choir, theater, there's music in theater, dance, all those things, makes the lives of our students more complete and gives them the ability to be a more complete adult as they go forward and participate lifelong as a musician. So thank you for your support for music education and everything that you do for us.
Questions?
What comes after G?
A.
A?
A. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, A, B, C, D. Babe.
So at Hartley, so all these different instruments, this is a relatively newer thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So yeah, every instrument, any of those pictures that you've seen have been acquired in the last three years.
You're running out of space?
We are pretty much maxed out. The only way to go is up, quite literally in terms of shelving, so I try to be as purposeful as I can with, again, with access of just having things for storage be accessible to students. Eric, you've talked a little bit about in and out of classes, well, trying to make sure the students can grab what they need and knowing how to do that on their own in the most natural way. So yeah, we are running out of room a little bit, but I'm just going up and so the two mono drums that you'll see like right there in that picture on the left, those are things maybe third graders are able to get on their own or an adult helps them, but yeah, we're doing well.
Well, thank you both for coming in, this was, I had no idea you had all these different instruments at Hartley, that's really cool, so I appreciate seeing that. But, and yeah, just reminding us all why music is so important to education and thank you for the work that you do. So for sharing that with us.
If you want to, we have a performance coming up at WIS with the fourth grade, it's called On The Radio, it's a little musical review.
I've heard it in my house.
You're welcome. It's a lot of fun and the kids are doing a great job with it, so that's next Thursday, we have a 7:00 PM, so I'll see you there, right? All right, great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And as they were saying, you know, music and the arts in general, such an important part of our experience for our students, so we're very pleased to be able to have great, great people taking our kids through that experience, so thanks gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
So moving on our agenda, the next thing I want to share with you, and I'm going to pass this around, you can take one here for reference here this evening, and we don't need to put it on the screen then Caitlin, because everyone's got a hard copy here this evening. The other piece we wanted to talk about today was just the preliminary budget update for the next fiscal year primarily, and as you know, we've been talking now for several months about a rightsizing and making some adjustments for our next fiscal year. And what I wanted to take you through tonight was kind of a, I would say, in the middle detail of where we're at right now with this process. The Finance Committee next week will take it through, look at the entire five-year plan and how this looks and talk maybe even a little bit more within some of these codes where some of this is coming from, followed by of course sending you some more information as a full board before you make action, take action on April 20th. And the action on April 20th is really related to the personnel actions that are involved in here because the purchasing and the supply budgets and those kinds of things are just things that will happen naturally, you know, pending as we do our work efficiently, so we work through that. So I'll start you at the top here, I'd like to move you down right away to where we say beginning fund balance here, so that $4.4 million where we're starting, projected to start next fiscal year, 23, 24 fiscal year. Of course, we just did the revised budget last month, you had a chance to see that's where we were starting from, with that perspective. That will be of course adjusted here and not till probably November when we get the audited fund balance when it's all said and done, but that's where we're projected to start our next fiscal year. And we're talking with unassigned funds with most of this conversation, the restricted funds and the assigned funds are something that either as a board or as a legislative, we have the money where it is. So that's why these revenues may seem a little bit lower than what you've, when you took the whole budget intake here. So projected revenues for next year, we take this year's revenue, 21,566, right now, based on the projections of the budget targets at the legislature. What we have done is we've been able to take what we originally had estimated to be kind of a 0%, we're not going to, we never really planned for any increase, and now at this point in the legislative process, based on the omnibus bills coming out of the Senate and the House, the governor's spending target, we can safely say, safely make a few more assumptions on where our dollars are going to land here for this next fiscal year. So 377,000, we would expect to be an increase in general education aid, that's going to be the 4% on the formula that you're going to hear, which is interesting when you look at this for Wasika Public Schools, the percent on the formula gets some of the most media coverage of any of the funding conversations at the state. It's probably the most minimal, well, it's certainly going to be helpful of course, but it's the smallest of the three significant increases we're going to be looking at here for today, but it is still positive for that. The $18,500 in reduced revenue, that's as we basically just are levy, our annual levy based on how we're going down for projections this year, based on the levy we passed last fall, state formula has that built in. Basic skills adjustment, $676,000 increase, that's compensatory for next year. So that's going to be what we happen with a direct certification with some of the things the legislature, legislation has put into place to make sure we're capturing all students and their need and capturing that compensatory revenue. That's actually one of the three that, pending student count, that's a very, very firm dollar amount, pending of course student numbers. Special education cross subsidy, at this point, the legislature, both the House, the Senate and the Governor have all committed to that in the 40% to 50% range for year one, if not getting up to 60% in year two and the second biennium of covering that. So 750,000 is reflected that just under half of what our projected special education subsidy is going to be. So you can see that we're spending 1.5 million or more on subsidizing our special education program through our general education fund, all positive things, all positive services for students, but that's going to be the, you know, the increased revenue for us that we can spend in our general fund, which is a positive thing in that regard. For us, because we are a regional hub, because our special education budget is what it is, that's, well, almost twice as impactful as the percentage of the formula. And then the other adjustments there, the 1.375 negative there, that's reflective of what we have built into our budget for Ezra dollars this year, which will not be there again next year because all that's funding has expired. You know, about 800,000 of that-ish or so with staff, some of their other services are things we were able to spend it on, technology and things like that, things like that, that's now, won't be in the budget for next year. So when you look at the adjusted unassigned revenues, we're going to be dealing with just under 22 million for next fiscal year. So when we look at our projected expenditures, that's going to be where we need to get ourselves into the black with some certain things. So I look at projected expenditures at 22, 414, so that's our base, so we're spending here in the base here, looking at that option there. We expect that our supply budget, our utility budget, our transportation budget, some of those things will increase. We have to know the reality of, it's going to cost more to heat our buildings, it's going to cost more to pay the electric bill, so we know that's coming up. The other thing that we know we're going to see some increase on is our contract costs. We're being conservative with the 1.5% increase here and here's why, because that is something we can control. We have direct control over those negotiations processes, so in effect, we can't necessarily control the utility costs. So we can be more conservative here, knowing that we have the option to come together next fall when we're negotiating to say, this is the dollar value we have, this is what we have, we choose to exceed this amount on a settlement, here's where the consequences are going to be when you go with that. So we felt like that would be a, we didn't want to put a zero because that would not be of course respectful and certainly we're not going to plan it, a zero's not realistic. You know, but at the same time, we know we're not going to be able to encumber a 10% raise next year either, so starting that option there. The next significant adjustment on this paper is staff adjustment. So we were able to make $843,000 identify in staffing reductions here for next year. How that breaks down, so we were able to look at our, what students had registered for at the high school, what our class size are looking like at the elementary, and district-wide 11 positions are what's not going to be on the budget for next year based on this proposal. Now, that's divided amongst all buildings, that is roughly half licensed staff, then there's some clerical, there's some district-wide positions, there is some clerical positions in there and some para positions in there. So 11 positions would be not here next year. The positions that have been reduced have been as the least impactful, that's not the right word, they're all impactful, not classrooms. So our class sizes are expected to increase significantly, we're not going to reduce any services for students, there's some intervention staff that are part of that conversation, restructuring those things at the high school. It's really, we moved last year to staffing by registration and not offering classes that we just don't have enough students to run, and that took a significant number of FTEs that we just don't need at the high school next year because the students didn't register for those classes, everything too. We do still have, and then, but, at the end of the day, through reassignment, through open positions, for example, an EL position, EL para position that was not filled this year is one of the positions that eliminated, so there's nobody there to go in there. We've had an open position at one of our buildings for a general education para, another reduction is going to transfer that person into that individual, into that location. So at the end of the day, based on today's count, it would be four individuals right now who would be, we don't have a placement for as of this fall, that we'd be bringing to you in April as a reduction in staffing. None of those individuals are out of our mind or out of our conversation, of course, as things open up, as things change, we have a resignation in the next few weeks, we go back to those sorts of things. So at the end of the day, for the dollar value that we have, making adjustments, attrition and moving people around for some open positions, we're able to accomplish a great deal of what we need to do without having to lay a great number of staff off. Those folks who are impacted, obviously that's a significant impact to their world district-wide, I never, I'm relieved that that's not any deeper than it is. And then in addition to those 11 positions that will not be there for other positions, just experienced a reduction in their assignment for that piece too, and that's something that, those conversations have all happened with individuals here, so folks know there are some decisions to be made with regards to seniority rights and things like that, but working through that with staff. So at the, at the end of the day, we were able to accomplish what we needed to, impacting as least as we possibly could to our staff or students. And we'll run through the whole list and we'll come back to questions if you have them there. The non-staff budget adjustments, $165,000 there, we were able to reduce our staffing budget for next year, we did a 10% reduction to all of our staff and supply budget, or supply, excuse me, all of our supply budgets for that piece, we're able to move some money from school age care, from the school readiness piece that general fund has been supporting community on, that community ed will be able to support those funds next year, for example, the school age care discount for our staff, general fund has been supporting that, they don't need to because his community ed fund balance is healthy now, and that'll be a comeback to our general fund in that pot. And then some software, some licensing, some professional development opportunities that we're going to just have to take a break from to reduce some of those costs here for right now. Again, we're not impacting any programming or opportunities for students, just is going to be, we're going to be awfully fiscally conservative on some of those purchases and what workshops we're going to and what software we're going to buy and that sort of thing here for next year. We were able to work and then well with melding our technology budget with our capital outlay, thinking about where our curriculum resources are, so in terms of our Chromebook rotation, in terms of getting our supplies done for the most part with our building and grounds, getting our projects done, working through the curriculum that we need to buy, that's all stuff, things we're going to be able to do, we're going to be able to accomplish that with this goal in mind. So our adjusted unassigned expenditures, 21, 893, leading us to a fund balance of just under 4.5 million, and at the end of the day, the $81,000 that we have projected would be the projected increase to our fund balance after the next fiscal year. So essentially almost $82,000 to the positive after the next fiscal year. We had talked about a couple, about 2 million being a target number several months ago. As the legislature has firmed itself up with the budget targets, we've been able to back that down to this number here so that we don't have to reduce anything unnecessarily. And so the timing, this is unprecedented, that's a word, unprecedentedly early for the legislature to identify budget spending targets like they have and through shared leadership, which has really benefited us and our staff, because now we can relatively confidently work on this budget here the way we have been. I'm also, everything we're hearing from the state is that some of those high-dollar mandates are essentially stalled and they're not going to be moving forward. Nothing's dead in the water until May 22nd when they gavel it closed, but at this point right now, those high-dollar mandates appear not to be impacting districts, which is a positive thing for us. One of the things I have told our teachers' union, I've told all of our bargaining groups, I've told all of our directors and I would say this to you too, if the legislature does something relatively shifty between now and the end, then it's June work for us to adjust that more and if we have to make a further adjustment, we will. But I don't, we're not in a position where I feel we have to lose any more great people with the confidence that we have and what we have for revenues coming in next year. So again, the Finance Committee will look at this in great detail and you'll get the full detail of it when the preliminary budget comes, there'll be just a handful of staffing decisions. There's a little bit of a mixture of probationary staff and we do have some licensed staff, some tenured staff who right now are potentially going to have to be on requested leave, but we're still looking at making sure the seniority lines up the way it needs to, but that process is something that we'll follow through with and it's just part of the, unfortunately part of the process we have to work through. But I'm, at the end of the day, I want to commend Elizabeth and all of our leadership team, this was hard, as it always is and you all understand that, but we are really using our money responsibly to provide what we need to provide without having to gouge anything. It really is rightsizing and we use the money strategically that we had, the Ezra money, the fund balance we had over the last few years, and now we're projecting ourselves to stabilize here, so that's good. Any questions you have now, we can certainly talk that through, otherwise we can obviously continue to follow up over the next few weeks.
So you said, you said you're pretty confident in the 4% state aid adjustment, that seems to be pretty confident.
Yeah, right now, the governor and the House both have 4% as their target and the Senate actually has 5%, but, so I think 4% is right now our minimum that we would see.
And then most of the staff reductions that you're talking about will come primarily as from attrition, is that what you're talking?
Yeah, right now, all but four, so some folks will be doing something different next year, but they'll still have a position with us and that's valuing their good work.
That's all within the, that's all within the realm of agreements and contracts and everything we've now.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
I feel like maybe we should just clarify just again, like why this is rightsizing and not budget reduction or whatever.
Sure, sure.
Just for the public, I just want to.
Yeah, I think the, when we talk about reduction or cutting, I equate that to what our kids not going to have next year, what our families not going to get to experience, what are we not going to offer for a program for next year? So, you know, we just were talking about music. If I were to come here and say to you, we're going to offer half as much music next year because of finances, then that's a cut, that's a reduction, that's what that is. But if we're able to offer the same programming, the same opportunities for students, we're just going to be using a little bit less staff to do it, that's a rightsizing of our budget. Now, I'm not going to pretend that some of our classes might not have, at the high school, might not have 30 or 32 kids in them, some of those upper-level classes as opposed to 24, that's part of the process. We're going to still be delivering interventions to our elementary students with some, a few less intervention staff, but you know, which is unfortunate, that's a part of the painful part of the process. But I would, I classify it as a right size because the opportunities for kids don't change.
So essentially, we're making our budget match our student population.
Essentially, and our revenue, right, exactly right, we're matching our revenue, we're living within our budget. Would I love to continue to have more staff of course, but you have to be within your budget, that's the most responsible way to do it.
What do you project the student population to be next year?
Elizabeth, do you have about 1737, is that the number you have? 1696 is ADMs, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so one.
1737 is our resident population, so they might use Sacred Heart or Team or some other district, but.
Okay.
Yeah, right around, not to go down any more than this year for the most part, to stay very steady, so right around 1730, 1735 will be our, I call it the head count, the 1696, that's the ADM, which, average daily membership, which that's, high school kids weighted more than an elementary kid, and if they go to PSEO, they're only a .8 ADM, that sort of thing, so that's why that number doesn't match exactly.
So I understand that Sacred Heart is going to be having kids pay tuition to go there next year.
I've heard that.
How is that going to impact, is that going to impact us with folks deciding, particularly in fourth grade, you know?
I suppose, I suppose it potentially could. One of the things that I just, through some conversation in the community, I know they had significant conversation with their, with their community at Sacred Heart about what was an affordable dollar value, so I wonder if maybe that's, we might not see as much because that's what's kind of been come to as an affordable amount. However, one thing that is really important to note about these, it wouldn't be in the detail you have tonight, but I'll share with you that our classrooms are not being reduced a significant amount. The only ones that, the only sections we're reducing are where we have actually a smaller class coming up, we're going to reduce a section there because we don't need 14 in a class, but, which means that if we have, we do have flexibility to absorb some students, should we have some handful of students coming in from Sacred Heart or anywhere else, our classes that they, all the way up through sixth grade are. they, all the way up through sixth grade are in the low to mid twenties still for next year projection.
How do you reduce paras? All of our paras are special ed paras, right?
No.
No?
No. We have general education paras, paras that help out with, with study halls, paras that helped out with, in the, in the media centers. We have, you know, the other piece too is we reduce them because if the position has been unfilled for an entire year, we rework our budget so that we don't need that position then. And so that position is no longer part of our budget, that option too. But special education has something called the maintenance of effort, which means if you're going to spend less year over year, then you have to justify it very clearly why you're not putting as much effort into those students financially. One of the ways you do that is if the, if the enrollment is down, right? And so that's a very clear reason why you wouldn't need those resources. The other thing we do is you just, you have to, you try to write your IP strategically so it's, there's a shared para service, not a one-on-one para unless there's something really, really needed for a student. I would, I would always encourage us to write para support, not one-to-one, because then you can move that around as you need to with your staffing. Yeah.
Okay. But also be accurate, our student count over the past five years has slowly crept down a little bit. So, I mean, is it accurate to say our rightsizing is, well, we kind of need to match up with that. As, as we reduce the student count, we need to reduce, we need to match our budget.
That's 100% accurate. That's the summary of what we've just been talking about.
Yeah.
The last that we had. And why this is important now, and really actually the timing of it worked out well for us, is because this big reduction of students happened three years ago. And then again, two years ago, kind of our pandemic combined what we thought was going to be happening anyway, the reduction of the students went, happened as it would. With the ESSR dollars, we were able to kind of absorb some of that at the time. So we didn't have to make significant reductions during a, do we have kids in the same room? Do we not? What's our process? We're able to keep kids in school because we could, their class size is small. Now, last really two years and even projecting into next fall, our enrollment has really stabilized out. But yeah, about, almost 200 students in the last five years.
Do we have any way of tracking of the reasons of the students, whether it's jobs or homeschooling or other schools in the region?
Yes. So our, our enrollment summary does keep track of who's open enrolled out, who's enrolled somewhere else, who's a homeschool. Yeah. Or they just left the district.
Right. It'd be interesting to see that, to see what the main causes.
Yeah. So our, the, the main cause that I can say right now is just leaving the community. That's the biggest piece. Because, and one of the reasons I, I know that, and we'll look at it again this summer and fall, is I look at what our market share was, how many kids that live in Wasika are choosing Wasika Public Schools. And right now, we have a 94% market share. And that's the same market share that has been almost very, almost within two percentage points the last 10 years. So more students aren't choosing our non-public schools or our home schools necessarily. There was a blip of homeschool and online enrollment during the pandemic, but those students are primarily back. And then it's just when they're pulling from a total population that's smaller, they have a lot, smaller enrollment. But our market share is remaining steady. So that's the one way I look at that.
Do we still have some ESSR money to use? No?
No. There are some dollars that will continue, there are some dollars that will be spent next fiscal year, but they're, they're already allocated. Yeah. You know, one of the things that we, what we chose to do, and I'm, I'm still very proud of this, is we put our ESSR money in the classrooms with people and didn't buy stuff. And so unfortunately, that means we have to do something like we do now. But I felt that's more impactful for kids than, you know, stuff.
Well, and also, I mean, we've been, we've used the last couple of years to gradually be reducing some staff. So every year, we've, we've reduced a bit and it's, I think that's helped as well.
I would say without even it really being a conversation like this, we, we probably accomplished about a third of this amount last fiscal year just through attrition.
Yep.
Just through moving things through. So.
Yeah. Other questions or do we need more time to, to think of questions?
And, yeah, and certainly that, that's why we're doing, that's why I wanted to bring it to you now. Because now, as you process this, as you think through it, we're also working with individual staff. By the time we come to you on the 20th of April, it might be two less positions we have to, we have to put on the list because we've, someone has resigned, something happened, right? Things, things evolve. And so that's part of it. Yeah.
I haven't followed up on it lately, but the school lunch deal. I had a conversation a couple of days ago. It sounded like it's going to be covered.
So it's, yep. So that is.
Now, is that a different fund?
Yes. Yeah. So that'll be our, our food service fund, which is a fund too, so it's a different fund. Yes. And that'll be effective next school year. So there will be free breakfast and lunch. Well, it's, yes, the current biennium, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. And then we'll see how the next.
I think that's a tentative plan for four years.
Right.
There is. What, what I will say at the end of the day, and I've had skepticism about this throughout, but from a school finance perspective, it actually, the way they were able to help us with compensatory money, it doesn't impact us negatively that way. It's a positive thing for families. So. But yeah, that one has already been signed by the governor.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Yep. All right. So yeah, so the next steps are, we'll see some personnel, the personnel decisions will be at the April meeting and then our preliminary budget will come to us in June. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. Yes. And again, as you, if you think through this, you have questions, you're not quite sure how this is going to go, please feel free to reach out to me or Elizabeth and we can talk through that. And speaking of Elizabeth, we have some candidates next week. They're not going to hope to replace, but we can do the best we can with that. But that'll, that is positive because we will hope to have that transition done by the end of May so that we have some time for her to help mentor and, and do the transition with our, our new business director. So.
Good. And did, do you have a board member sitting on that hiring committee?
When we get to the finalist committee, we will.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We, our pool for this type of position is obviously not super deep because it's a very specific. We do have multiple candidates, which is exciting. I was really, really hoping that that, it's a good, a good testament to what Elizabeth and her team has done. We do have some, some interest. Once we get through the first round and we see what finalists will look like, then we'll, we'll reach out to primarily the finance committee.
Yep.
And see if there's somebody willing to sit on that, on that final interview with us. And if it doesn't work in the schedules, then see who, who else is available and go from there. But that position works so directly with you all. And so that's one that I would, I, anytime we have a cabinet-level director, cabinets kind of, some districts use that term, some districts don't, but that executive director that works closely with the board, I think it's important to have some representation on that team.
All right. Any other questions for Eric tonight? Okay.
All right.
Thank you. I think that is everything. So our next meeting is April 20th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thursday, April 20th. And Finance Committee, I'm sure you guys will have a nice deep dive into this next week. Yeah. So, all right. Thank you.